Ms. Virginia Bell, present. Ms. Linda Cheney, present. Ms. Joyce Porter, present. Dr. Kelly Joseph, present. Ms. Miranda Watson, here. All members present. Okay, Ms. Chief Personal Updates.
Good evening, Lord. Our report, we have hired a couple more people and physicians that were on vacant. Then we had a couple of resignations as well, and we have re-advertised for those positions so that we can get them filled quickly. We had one transfer and then we had three awesome people to retire from our district, and we are very excited that they have given us their years of support and dedication throughout all these years, and we wish them a farewell. At the bottom you will see that we still have some vacancies. The elementary vacancies you see listed here are currently being held by teachers who are pursuing their certifications, so we still have to list them as vacancies so that we can get a certified teacher in that spot. Do you have any questions?
Committee, any questions? I have none. All right, back to Mr. Personal, committee.
Thank you.
Budget Finance Committee is called to order. Roll call. Ms. Virginia Bell, present. Dr. Ellen Hurst. Ms. Linda Cheney, present. Dr. Kelly Joseph. Ms. Amy Haller, here. Ms. Bell is going to... So you're volunteer?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Porter. Ms. Joyce Porter.
Present.
Okay, first item is to receive and consider approval of Luba Workers' Comp Policy Renewal. Do we have a representative?
Typically, Mr. Mendy would be here, and he is running a few minutes late, so if you'd like to place this as an item further down the agenda, we can do that.
Can we just table this? I move that we table it. Got a motion? Got a second? Vote. Ms. Bell? Yes. Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
That concludes the Budget Finance Committee.
Policy Committee. Roll call.
Mr. Alfred Travis?
Here.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Dr. Kelly Joseph, here. All members present.
First item is received and considered for approval with revised policies for inclusion in the San Lina Paris School Board Policy Manual. We got all that in an email. I looked over it pretty extensively. It's just standard stuff. Am I correct, Dr. Joseph?
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to discuss any of that? Can we get a motion?
I assume that we receive all policies collectively? Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cheney and second by Ms. Porter that we consider approval of these policies collectively. Is there any further discussion? Vote.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Three zero motion here.
Item two is received and considered for approval in 2017 committee meetings and regular board meetings scheduled. That was also in the email, and it looked pretty standard. Would you like to say anything about that, Dr. Joseph?
Yes, there's one item that I'd like to discuss, and that is the board meeting for February 9th, 2017. That is during the time of the LSBA convention, and typically all the board members attend that session, and so I'm asking for you all to consider rescheduling that board meeting date in the future.
Would you like to move it to the following Thursday? The next Thursday after that? I don't have a calendar for this.
That's the following Thursday, the 16th. It's on the second page of your agenda.
Well, I don't have that effect without the job.
Okay.
All right, so what you want to do?
Move it to February the 16th instead of the 9th. I assume that we change that meeting date to February 16th.
I'll second.
And you want to take the whole schedule and, Ms. Cheney, receiving the schedule with the change?
I move that we receive with the change.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cheney and second by Ms. Porter that we receive the schedule with the change for February. Is there any further discussion? Motion.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Three zero motion here, refer to the full board.
That concludes the Policy Committee.
He said he wanted to explain.
What did he say?
He didn't answer.
Can we reconvene the Budget Finance Committee? Roll call. Ms. Virginia Bell, present. Ms. Linda Cheney?
Present.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Okay, first item is to receive and consider approval of Luba Workers' Comp Policy Renewal.
Good evening. I apologize for being late. The detour got me. I'm here tonight to discuss the workers' compensation renewal from Luba, the offer. Were you guys able to receive a copy of my proposal? As you can see, we have a significant increase this year, and the increase is due to a couple of reasons. One is payroll is always going to drive the premium for workers' compensation. Our rates are actually down a little bit in two of our classifications, but this is estimated premium. In my highlighted text, you can see where our experience modifier, that goes by your loss history and the amount of your claims and the size of your claims. It has jumped from a .84 to a 1.04. 1.0 is even, the lower the better, the higher a surcharge. So you had a 20-point swing from that right there. When I first got the news on this, company put me on notice around October, said they got the new NCCI mod with the experience modifier going up. I immediately pulled the loss runs, started looking at it. I've identified a pattern, what's going on here. Your loss runs, your history, is not bad for a school board, but there's a frequency issue, and I've identified, I think, the slipping falls is causing a problem. Of 36 claims, 17 of them are slipping falls. So I've started working with Luba to get their loss control people out here and look at maybe some policies and procedures and maybe get this experience mod back down. By doing that, you could see on the preferred discount, they gave us 9% back on that, saying because we're considering to work with. So I got it down, the original offer was coming in over $100,000, and we got the 99% got it down to $97,000. I went to market to get comparable rates from other companies. I had another company could come in, maybe at 96, but I thought for a $1,000 savings would not be worth moving to another carrier and starting fresh with them, where we have Luba coming in, who's already familiar with us, working some already open claims and willing to work with us more, and it's our mod that's driving the premium, it's not the carrier. No matter where I go, that experience mod follows. This is my recommendation, is to stay with Luba and work with them, try to limit our claims, get them backed down on a frequency basis. The large claims aren't even really that large. Some of them were car accidents, you can't avoid them. Slipping falls, I think we can fix. Student fight, breakup, student fighting, that's going to happen from time to time, but I think slipping falls is what we need to focus on and maybe have some checks and balances with the janitorial services or not allowing children to keep their boat bags in the aisles, because there are a couple of tripping falls over that, too. Small stuff, I think we can clean up, go get our loss ratio back down. Any questions?
What is this, a 30-point increase? It's huge.
It is.
What is it now?
Roughly...
55 to 97?
You're roughly at 40. Now, the payroll is going to adjust that. If our payroll, audit to payroll comes down, that's going to adjust this as well. On the flip side, if our payroll is up, that's going to adjust it as well. They audit at the end of every year. The payroll is what drives your work comp premiums. It's this one factor, that's the 20-point swing, that's really, and then us losing almost a 20% discount for having such a good loss history over the course of the years, we lost that, but I got 9% of that back. So you went from almost a 40-point swing in just discounts.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Sorry. Okay. Committee, this is not... We just got to look at how we can do slips and falls. That's a move. Got a motion? I'll second. And a second. Any other questions? Then we'll take a vote, Mr. President. Ms. Bell, yes. Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Three zero motion here, refer to the full board. Thank you.
Our Father and our God, in the name of Jesus, Spirit is with God. We come to say thank you. We truly thank and praise you for this day, dear God, but bring us here safe. We say thank you, Jesus. For everyone who's here right now, Lord God, we thank you, praise you. Lord, we ask your blessing upon this meeting, Lord God. Be with us, Lord God, with every decision making, Lord God. We ask you blessed, Lord God. We do need you, Lord God. We need you to bless us right now. Father God, we just thank and praise you, Lord God, for everything you're doing right now, everything that you have done, and everything that you're going to do, and we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Plenipotentiary. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now holding the meeting of the San Lina Paris School Board. Roll call.
Ms. Joyce Porter?
Present.
Dr. Ellen Hurst? Ms. Linda Cheney, present. Ms. Paula Whitley?
Present.
Ms. Virginia Bell?
Present.
Mr. Alfred Travis?
Present.
By present, nor access to current status.
Item C, approved minutes. Committee meeting, October 13th, 2016. Regular board meeting, October 13th, 2016.
Madam President, I move... I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Porter, second by Ms. Bell. Any questions? No questions? Vote.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Five zero motion here.
Item D, approved current agenda.
I move to approve the agenda, Madam President.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Travis, second by Ms. Whitley. Any questions? No questions? Vote.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Five zero motion here.
I would like to pause for a moment of silence, and regarding Mr. Ellen Hurst, please assume an attitude of prayer. Amen. Item E, Superintendent's Report.
Good afternoon and good evening, everyone. Good evening, Lord. I have a couple of items that I'd like to share with everyone. First, we'll begin with our maintenance report from Mr. Tyleron Southwood, Chumpers Plus.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening. Through the last two, three months, we have been working strenuous with the janitors and custodians to try to get the district up to par. We are still understaffed in certain areas, and we are working with what we have. At the ELC, we still need additional help with the custodians and also here at San Lina College and Career Academy. As far as the Staples Project, Monday, they will be coming to start the installation of automatic soap dispensers, the hand towels, and uniform all schools to one type of tissue. So we're going to try to continue to cut costs through the district. Other than that, we haven't had any major breakdowns. A lot of stuff we have with parent in-house, with the exception of Rota Ruta, that's the only problem that we haven't had, just the sewage by it being old. That concludes my report, unless y'all have anything else y'all need to ask.
There are two items that I'd like to add to the maintenance report. At some point, we are going to have to take a look at our infrastructure with regard to plumbing, our pipes, the systems underneath and underground. Those are old, outdated, and the body house sales have to replace a lot of the pipes underground. We have a lot of water leaks, you know, a lot of issues with that, so that is, that will require a lot of funding because it's an expense. The next thing, as you know, our van is pushing to have a Marching 100, and that will require additional equipment and additional space, so we may need to look at having a new facility for our van department. So those are two big ticket items that we need to start thinking about and addressing in the near future. Thank you, Mr. South. Next on my report is update on FEMA insurance claims. We are still waiting on the report from the insurance agency. Once we receive that report, we will submit that to FEMA. November 18th is the last day for us to submit that report, so we're hoping to get that as quickly as possible. Next up is the Thanksgiving holiday break. November 18th, we will have a half-day for students, and it will be a half-day for our teachers. We will have some professional development for them on that day, and then we will be off for the whole week, November 21st through 25th. So just want to make everyone aware that we will be out during that time. A big announcement, you know we have our first district game this Friday, tomorrow, against Lakeview. It will be here at our football stadium for 7 o'clock, and we want to thank all of our fans for maintaining positive, good behaviors and doing everything that's right and supporting our team. We're going to ask that you please make sure that our facilities remain clean by placing all of your trash in the trash cans, where we have them placed all around the football field. Once again, there's no liquor or tobacco products allowed on school grounds, and we would like for you to stay at the end of the game as our van serenades our football team for the awesome work that they do on the field. We're assured of victory. I'm sure we're going to really breeze past this little team and move on to the next one. It is our first district game for our district champions, so let's please get them around the floor. Next, I would like to present to you our 2016 district and school performance scores. We have been waiting for a very long time on these results, and I'm happy to report this information to you all. Before I share the results with you all, I would like to remind everyone about the various changes that's occurred with our accountability system in Louisiana. First thing is, the grading scale changed from a 200-point grading scale to a 150-point grading scale. With that change, the scores had to shrink in order to make adjustments into this new scale. All of the districts in the state of Louisiana saw a decrease in their district and school performance scores to adjust to this change. Also, all of the students who received Approaching Basic or Fair on ELC and Approaching Basic on ID, at one point, received points, but after 2013, no points were awarded. So there are no points for students who score unsatisfactory or Approaching Basic. Another thing that changed, students 3rd through 8th grade were assessed solely on their performance on the test. Prior to 2013, we did receive points for attendance and also dropout. And then also at the high school level, they changed up the way they assess the schools, where 25% of the school's performance score is based on ACT, 25% is on ELC, 25% on our graduation index, and 25% on our graduation rate or the strength of the diploma. Prior to 2013, they looked at the graduation exit exam, the attendance, and dropout. Another thing that changed was progress points. Prior to 2013, any additional points that we received was given within the school performance score within the calculator. If a student had to go to summer school and take the test again and they improved, we received bonus points for that. Now those points are outside of the calculations, and so that creates a very volatile situation for our schools. In addition to that, Louisiana moved from the Louisiana comprehensive curriculum to the Common Core-based standards, and now they switched again to now what's called the Louisiana Student Standards. We also had to change up with the change in the curriculum. We had to purchase new textbooks, technology, resources, and provide extensive professional development for our teachers in order for us to adjust to these changes. So we are not making up for any ground loss before 2012. It's just a new accountability system that has changed every year since then. So here we go. I'm going to start with the College and Career Academy. As I stated, 25% is for ACT, 25% ELC, 25% the cohort graduation rate, and 25% the strength of the diploma, and we're able to earn up to 10 points in progress points. So starting with our assessment index for 3rd through 8th, because we're a combination high school, so we have 7th and 8th graders on our campus, so we get points for that. Last year, 2015, we were 36.9. This year, we increased to 37.9. For our dropout credit accumulation index, that means all of our 9th grade students who successfully passed and were on the 10th grade. Last year, we had no points because we didn't have any students at that time, because we just got the students back from the Recover School District, so now those 9th graders are now, and they are now in 10th grade. So we see all of the points from that, and we are now at 138.1. For our end-of-course exams, last year we were at 47.4. This year, we are at 57.6. That's a 10.2 increase. For our ACT, we were 27.8 last year. This year, we're at 46. It's an 18.2 increase. The strength of the diploma, our graduation index, last year was 73.2. This year, we're at 69.7. That's a decrease of 3.5 points. For our graduation, our cohort graduation rate index, last year was 83.4. This year is 80.8. We lost ground by 2.6 points. And the overall graduation rate is the actual percentage of students that pass. Last year was 66.7. This year is 65.4. So we lost there, and we're at 1.3. Last year, we received 10 progress points, and this year, we received 4.5. So that's a good thing. Whether you receive 1 point, 2 point, 5 points, 10 points, it's good that you receive these progress points. For our Arts and Technology Academy, as stated earlier, 100% of the school performance score is based on assessment, and you are allowed up to 10 points of progress points. Last year, our index was 35.1. This year, it's 41.4. That's an increase of 6.3. Last year, we received 4.8 progress points, and this year, we received all 10 progress points. So our school performance score... For our San Lina Arts and Technology Academy, we have constantly been considered an F. We were in a failing, we were an F school, at 39.9. That was the school performance score. This year, I'm happy to report that finally, we have no students in San Lina. And we moved up to 51.4. That's an 11.5 increase in our school performance score for last school year. So that is awesome. Our College and Career Academy, they were 62.2 last year, and we maintain our D at 61.8. So that's just a .4 loss. So we basically maintained. So over time, since the accountability system changed in 2012, you see where we are with Arts and Technology Academy, 40.5 in 2012-13 to 45.3. We dipped to 39.9, and now we're up to 51.4. You see for the College and Career Academy, we're at 48 in 2012-13, went up to 49 in 13-14, then moved up to 62.2 and maintaining at 61.8 this 15-16 school year. Our district's performance score over time, since the change in accountability, 2012-13, we're at 45.2. We moved up to 51.4, then again to 54.9 in 2014-15, and our new district performance score is 61.2. And our new district, district performance score is 61.2. We had a 6.3 point increase for last school year, and we are now 8.8 points away from becoming a D school. Also, we'd like to report to you on the early childhood results. This is a, this is Act 3. This is where all of the early childhood programs and schools merged together. Long story short. And we were partnered with East Feliciano. And the achievement levels for those results are excellent, proficient, approaching proficient, and unsatisfactory. This report is a report that is not being shared to everyone, you know, throughout the state, because it's a first-time program. But I would like to share the results with you all tonight. For our early childhood results, we have received a classification of proficient. So we are doing an exceptional job with our early childhood, and I'm very pleased with those results. So we look forward to maintain that and continuing with our progress in the future. So I'd like to thank all of our teachers, our students, our administrators for their relentless pursuit of excellence. They work really hard against a lot of challenges every single day. Our supportive parents and community members, who truly understand and appreciate the hard work that it requires to move students forward. Our student office staff, all of them wear many hats and have to do a lot of work beyond their job description. I want to thank them very much. And of course, the school board members for allowing me to do the job required in order to move students forward. As long as we maintain and keep children at the forefront and truly stay focused on them, we will continue to move St. Helena forward. So I want to thank you all very much.
I have one question.
Need to come to the poll, Mr. Stone?
Has the accountability system?
You have to come to the poll.
I just wanna ask some questions about the accountability system.
You alluded to how, how it's been moving and changing. Now, is it stabilized? Now, oh, no?
The accountability system has changed every, every year since 2012, and it's about to have another major overhaul starting at school.
Okay.
That's on the state, Mr. Stone. Move the card. It's on LDOE.
But this time around, St. Helena has a voice at the table. Serving on the Accountability Commission and also on the Superintendent Advisory Council. Serving in those capacities allows us the opportunity to truly voice our concerns and any issues that we have during, during these changing times.
Well, good. Hopefully, we have other voices with you that's calling the same thing.
Yes. We have Ms. Jackson in the audience and Mr. McPherson. Would you like to say a few words about your faculty now?
I am so excited. Let me tell you something, it is truly a blessing to be a D. I'm excited about being a D. I'm excited to know that we have the board members, the district office, Dr. Joseph, the parents, and especially the students to give us that, we can do it. To give us that attitude, no matter what happens or what comes our way, we're gonna be successful. And so I am so excited, I'm just. When Dr. Joseph called me the other day, and, you know, she called my phone about five times. She said, "Oh, Lord, what have I done now?" And when I answered the phone, she said, "Donna Jackson!" "We're D, we're no longer a F." And I cried, so I shouted, I pulled the car over, because this is a wonderful thing, and I'm just excited.
Item F, approve the committee reports. Madam Chair, I know that we approved the committee reports collectively with the necessary correction on the, on the policy.
What was the paperwork, again?
Meeting dates.
On the meeting dates for the boards and the committee meetings and the board meeting dates.
Madam President, I second that, ma'am.
Motion by Ms. Porter, second by Ms. Bell, that we receive all committee reports collectively with the change of the February meeting date. Any questions? No questions, vote.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Five, zero, motion here.
Item D, executive session, this doesn't matter.
I move we go into executive session, Madam President.
I second that, Madam President, for G and H. I'll do the collecting.
Motion by Mr. Travis, there we go in executive session for item's G and H. Second by Ms. Porter. Any questions? No questions, vote.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Five, zero, motion here.
Can I get the motion, that we return from executive session?
I move we resume executive session.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Travis, second by Ms. Porter, that we resume, return from executive session.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Five, zero, motion here.
There were no action taken in executive session. Item I, next meeting date, committee meeting, December 8th, 2016, at 5:45. Regular board meeting, December 8th, 2016, at 6 o'clock PM. St. Helena College and Career Academy Auditorium, 14340, Highway 37, Greensboro, Louisiana, 70441. Closing comments?
Closing comments, for any board member? I have none.
All I have to say is go Hawks.
I have one thing to say, well, actually two. I am very proud to know that child is no longer F school. We are a D school. Please, go spread the word. We are no longer a F school, we're a D school. And, I want Ms. Porter, go Hawks.
Oh, oh, I do have one comment. At our church, we have a Hawk player that attends our church. You know, Sunday, I did acknowledge that Hawk member at church, that they were district champ. The only thing, next time, I'm gonna say, they're Hawks, not Eagles, something. Anyone else?
The last motion.
I have to move.
Motion by Ms. Porter, second by Ms. Bell. Oh, yes.